We can get everybody out of here safely. At this time, I call a meeting to order. I'll ask Clerk Judy Sligapunko to read the rule.
Thank you Chair Murneke. Okay, Member Harla.
Here.
Member Johnston.
Here.
Member Laffler Kemp.
Here.
Member Murneke, or Chair Murneke.
Here.
I am here. Member Welty.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Crawford.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Hampson.
Here.
Secretary Tebow. And student representatives, Representative Manning.
Here.
And Representative Tremble.
Here.
We are all here.
Thank you, Members Sligapunko. This time, I ask the audience to stand. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And part of music in the school month is we can show off our wonderful music departments from both Denfeld and East. We have wonderful directors and today to perform East High School Sterling Strings, directed by Amin Bradley and the East Choraleers directed by Jerry Upton. Take it away, thank you. Some comments from Ms. Akervik. Where are you? Oh Sterling Strings, yes, I didn't know that. Didn't hear it. Thank you so much for coming out on this fine evening. You're the only one that listens. This isn't public comment.
I should say extra just because of curriculum, right?
Right.
Well, you can take my name as part of that public comment. Terry Akervik, thank you Chair Murneke, members of the board, Superintendent Gronseth, directors, visitors, parents, and especially those students. This was a tough gig to get into this building and especially with the snow. So we really appreciate it. And we had a lot of groups offered to come, the high school groups. And so they were the first ones who signed up. So we really appreciate it. That last piece is called Palladio. I know it in our house, or Mr. Akervik and I know it as the jewelry store song. So since it's my birthday soon, I'm going to be going shopping. And I love that piece of music. But the kids were great. March is Music in Our Schools Month, and it's also Youth Art Month if you didn't know that. Music in Our Schools is sponsored by the National Association of Music Educators. Concerts and performances are across the district, the state, the nation, and honor music at in our schools. Thanks again to Miss Aline Bradley and the Sterling Strings and Mr. Jerry Upton and the choraleers. There are great things happening in our schools in music. Superior and excellent ratings at the solo and small ensemble as well as the large ensemble groups. And I know the solo and small group was held at Denfeld, and I think for the first time. It's been a long time. So that was a great honor for our district. And I hear that the students did very well. The high school and middle school students have been participating in honor band, choir and orchestra days at UMD as well as other area schools. Many of the students have also participated in festivals down in the Twin Cities, Superior and across our region. There are multitude of performances by these zero hour ensembles. This is just two of the many that we have throughout the community. There's also many special concerts by our elementary music classes and choirs, my world beat group at Myers Wilkins as well, grandparents day, veterans day, holiday programs and spring events. And it's been a pleasure to see some of you at those. So we appreciate that. And we invite you anytime to come into our classes. You are always welcome. The door is always open. Just stop by because we'd love to see you with us. All of the music teachers, not only teaching during the day in the district, participate in some sort of community band, choir orchestra by singing and playing as well as conducting. They volunteer in community projects. They put in countless hours. And many of you see them at night and early, early in the morning, supporting the students and families. I'm happy to say I just celebrated my 25th year in Duluth teaching a couple of weeks ago. What's quite an honor. And I started as a long-term sub at Morgan Park quite a few years ago. This is also my ninth year working in curriculum and learning services and speaking to you about music program. And a couple of you were here nine years ago, I see. It's great to see you. Sometimes it has felt like a roller coaster ride of great moments of creating and performing beautiful music with the students. And then the struggles with the layoffs, the budget cuts, the staff changes. The one main constant for me and for the other music teachers is the achievement of the students and their musical growth. To us as music teachers, we have struggled with the teacher-student ratio, the cuts to less than time in the middle school, the funding sources that provide for our program have been cut. The students are not necessarily at the level that we would like right now or expect. But the teachers are working hard, the students are improving their school skills every day at kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. And we have support by the parents, the families and the community. And we know that, we hear that. And you have heard that as well. Speaking on behalf of the music department, thank you again for your time and your support. And please think about these priorities for the music student growth and learning when you look at the budget for this next school year and beyond. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you Ms. Akervik, and thank you for arranging for this. We now move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Welty. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Member Harla.
I have an addition to make to the agenda and the education committee report. In your packets in front of you, in your green folders, we had some last minute request to educate, some last minute field trips requests that were done, they came in and they're for students this month, but they were last minute from the schools. So we need to look over them in order, so that they can be approved to go on them.
So without objection, we'll add those field trips to the education report. Thank you, Ms. Harla, Member Harla. All in favor of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay. The agenda is approved. We now go to the approving of the minutes. We start with our regular school board meeting February 25, 2014. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm.
Second.
Second by Member Harla. Discussion. Member Welty.
Thank you Chair Murneke. On the second page of those minutes, there is one item that is just kind of stuck without a little bit of explanatory information about it, that school and community recognition February 2014. This was in relation, or in regards to the wonderful check we got from Quick, Quick Trip. I'm just wondering if we should have just mentioned, I believe was Ed Crawford sort of introduced and explained this? This might have been his verbiage in fact.
And what do you want us to do?
I would just add that Ed Crawford thanked Quick Trip at this time in making the following notation about their contributions to the district.
Sure. So noted. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Special education board meeting, March 4, 2014. Motion to approve. So moved by Member Laffler Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Harla. Do you want to turn your? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Special, it passes. Special education board meeting, March 10, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Laffler Kemp. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. We now move on to school and community recognition. I pass this over to Mr. Assistant Superintendent Crawford.
Members of the board, in honor of Music in Our Schools Month.
Mr. Crawford, the board is invited to come down to the front.
Absolutely. I'm pleased to present two musicians, Aliyah Greben from Denfeld and Madeline Monson Gerds from East High School for recognition. Aliyah is with us tonight. Madeline could not be here due to a previous scheduled performance. Aliyah took first place in the 2014 Duluth to Paris Symphony Orchestra's Young Artist Competition. The competition is open to high school students and college students up to age 19. Aliyah is a three-time winner of the youth orchestra Hester Scholarship Competition and recently took second place in the solo competition in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Madeline won the 2014 youth orchestra Hester Memorial Scholarship Competition. She participated with many students from throughout Minnesota, performing a beautiful and expressive interpretation of the hidden concerto in C major movement, too, as her winning solo. Did I kill that one? Anyway, congratulations to our two very talented young women.
It's one of the fun things we get to do, the Board of Education, is to recognize the outstanding achievements of our staff and of our students. And we have a number of wonderful staff and students. Thank you very much for coming out on tonight. We now go to reading of communications and petitions. I'm sorry, the audience. That was my fault. Ms. Akervik, you are fine. We go to Jimmy Zak, Duluth Community Garden Program. Ms. Zak, if you'd step up the podium, you have, we have a three-minute leeway to speak and feel free to begin.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm here to update the school board on progress related to my project, which is a contract that the Duluth Community Garden Program has with the statewide health improvement program in healthy Northland to increase healthy foods in the schools. So what we've done over the last year and a half has worked alongside of five schools in the district, as you're probably aware, but just bringing you up to speed on school garden projects, integrating them into curriculum, getting them, build capacity with the staff for the school gardens so that they're sustainable. I've worked very hard with Carrie Lighter and other administrative staff and teaching staff as well as food service staff to make them be embedded in their site. But what I wanted to update you about tonight is a roundtable meeting that was held last Thursday evening here at historical Central High School in room 318. And what happened there was, there were 45 people in attendance. So I wanted to just give you that number right up front, with another dozen who expressed regrets for not being able to make it. Among those 45 plus a dozen that couldn't make it were administrators from the district. There were all of the food service staff. So every cafeteria manager in the district was there and some of their support staff. A lot of parents, probably half in attendance were parents. There were representatives from the League of Women Voters. I think there were about four people there. And then the final group, so that was about it. That was the sort of the gamut of all the people that were there. And then there were 10 kids in attendance. We did a childcare so that we could make sure a lot of people could attend. We didn't want any barriers. So what we did in the meeting is, how am I doing for time? Okay. So what we did at the meeting is we talked about food politics. So everybody gave their input and sort of what I've done and where I'm at and what I wanted to tell you about is where I'm at and what I'm going to do next is I'm taking all of the input from those 45 people and I'm sorting them into categories and then I'm going to share out back to them and we're going to make a decision about what to do. It's rooted firmly in a grant that we acquired, I wrote on behalf of the school district for food service, to get food processors, cutting boards and knives in all 13 schools as well as the training for the staff to learn more about processing whole foods. So that's part of the project. But then it's sort of going forward, it's what frameworks can we build in our system to do programming? So it could be something that we farm to school and supporting, of course, the existing resource of those beautiful school gardens that went in. So that's what I have, that's, you know, bringing you up to speed and, let me see, just make sure I don't. So I guess, you know, what I hope for is to be maybe put on the agenda in the future to give you a more comprehensive update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Lauren Martel. Thank you Lauren for coming on.
Good evening. As usual, I was going to rain on the parade a bit, but I just can't make myself do it tonight after all that beautiful music. So I'm just going to say that I have some concerns here about the finances of the district yet and the general accountability of this board. And I'll voice those again in the future. I'm sure you have no doubts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martel. Member Harla, any other speakers? Thank you. We conclude our audience for the day. Reading, oh, I'm sorry. Let me, if you have three minutes, identify yourself, you know.
I emailed members of the board this morning. My name is Jana Blomquist and I have concerns about the music department. And for those of you that don't know me, I taught for 30 years in Iowa and I've been in this community for seven years teaching music, first at Holy Rosy, Holy Rosary Catholic Schools. And then after establishing a band program there, I now have a private studio and just have watched for the last seven years as the instrumental music program, in particular strings and wind. The department has decreased, the staff obviously, and just in great concern about that. For instance, I have a daughter that grew up in Iowa and she, and most of the departments in Iowa, we start our students in fourth grade for strings, in fifth grade for band. And they get a private or group lesson, most of them private lessons, during school, before school or after school, from the time that they start in fourth or fifth grade until the day that they graduate. And moving up here has been somewhat of a shock. And I know that I've addressed this before with, I've met with the superintendent before at the Think Kids meetings and I've met with certain staff, you know, staff members and they're doing what they can, they're doing very well with, under circumstances. Right now, there is no more private instruction. I have many students in my studio, but they don't come from Duluth schools because the Duluth Public School, people are kind of left wondering what happened to our private lesson program. I have Hermantown students, I have Edison students, I have Marshall students, and those people all have thriving band programs. They're inspired to take lessons from me. Duluth Public Schools, I'm just really worried because I don't want to live in a community that doesn't have a good public instrumental music program. And it shouldn't be this way because it shouldn't be that kids have to go to a private lesson instructor like myself. I'm hurting my own business, I know. But they shouldn't have to pay $20 a half hour for a private lesson instructor. That should be available to them in public school. And my colleague and I run band program, we run festivals in Two Harbors, Jana Udenberg and I. And we run festivals for middle school students. And the sad thing is, is that all the area schools participate. Marshall participates also, Hermantown participates, Edison participates. Leslie Churchill did take her eighth graders last year for the first time ever. But everybody knows that Duluth doesn't have the caliber of music program to participate in these wonderful opportunities. And it's just, it just breaks my heart. So thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We go on to reading and communications and petitions. There are none. We go to our superintendent for his report.
Sorry about that. Well, I want to start out by thanking Sterling Strings and Choraleers for sharing their music with us this evening. I'm always so impressed with their talents and their skills. And this being Music in the Schools Month, I know that there have been many opportunities for families and community members to enjoy performances at a lot of our schools, like Mrs. Akervik had pointed out. And I hope that people took that opportunity to go and see our students. There's also a choir competition, a small group competition held at Denfeld, as Mrs. Akervik noted the other day, and I understand that our students did very well and had the opportunity to hear many choirs from throughout the area at that competition. And our students have been very busy in a lot of different activities and they've been doing very well. And their efforts have been getting attention, not only locally, but statewide and nationwide. One of the examples that I have is the robotics competition that Duluth hosted, and it was a world record-breaking double regional robotics competition. That's a mouthful. But teams as far away as Hawaii flew in for this event and it has become an event that gets national attention every year. We're very proud of both the Denfeld and the East Daredevil robotics teams. And congratulations goes out to the Daredevils mentor, Phil Norris. He received the Woody Flowers Award at the regionals for his work with robotics team not only this year but in the past as well. So thank you to him. I know that the robotics teams would not be able to do what they do without the help of mentors and support throughout the community. We also have the hockey team, the Duluth East Boys Hockey Team specifically earned their sixth consecutive trip to state this year, prevailing over Elk River in overtime in section seven AA finals. We also have the Destination Imagination Teams from Congdon Park, Lester Park and Ordine East, and they've earned an opportunity to compete at the state tournament in April. So that's very exciting as well. And Ordine East Mission Improvable team received the Da Vinci Award for outstanding creativity. And I just found out today that two of our teams from East in Knowledge Bowl are going to state as well. So congratulations to them. Well, what we know is that when students are actively engaged in activities, they're much more likely to succeed in other areas. So I'm very proud of the many opportunities that we're able to provide for our students and that they take those opportunities to explore things that they may be passionate about.
Thank you Superintendent Gronseth. I'm sure you speak for the entire board about how proud we are of the number of students who have done so well in this past month, and your report shows that. Thank you. We now move on to the report of the standing committees. We'll begin with the education committee. Member Harla.
Thank you very much. We had a brief, just an hour and a half, education committee meeting. On this time, we had to be done right on time or right at a certain time for the township elections. So had to have some good discussion within that time. Our first presentation that we had was from Pram Reese, the director of Head Start. Our first presentation that we had was from Pam Reese, the Director of Head Start, and she was talking to us a lot, she gave us a little bit of an update about Head Start, gave us a really good overview, and then also talked about how they're in the process of applying for some funding. Some of the things that I took from that were that we have a Head Start that's in really good standing across the state. Other programs that are questionable have to go for a lot more fidelity checks, and we have a longer amount of time in between continuing fidelity checks as we go, but that we do have a program in good standing. So a good job to our Head Start program. And it was, her presentation was recommended that the board receive the item as informational, but she will be coming back to us again with additional budget considerations in the coming months. Our next presentation was on the 2013 graduation data and just overall graduation data from the last ten years. Dr. Tanya Bohm Lake, our Director of Assessment, Evaluation, and Performance, presented our graduation rates for the Duluth Public Schools. There's been a change in how the state actually goes about how they record our graduation rates. And so she did, gave us a really great overview and showed us some great graphs so we could understand how that looks. And so a thank you to Dr. Bohm Lake for taking time to update our board on that. Some really great discussion around that. And just a quick note on that, that we did have some good conversations. Again, this does tie back to the achievement gap. We do need to continue working on this as a board. It is a very important issue that is not just something to talk about, it's something to actually continue addressing from a policies down to a hands-on level within our entire district. So that was, it was very apparent in the graduation data that that's important. Number three, looking at the Curriculum Alignment Implementation Plan presentation, Superintendent Gronseth and our Curriculum Coordinator, Kevin Abraham, some shared information about the implementation plan that they'll be putting forward so that we can be on, we can be in line with state standards for that. I know that during the Budget Committee, we'll be voting on an investment on that, but, so that we can be in line, and I know that that's being guided a lot by the Minnesota Department of Education, and we will work, continue to work hard on that. So thank you for all of your help in that and look forward to hearing updates as that goes through. So that was also recommended that the item be received as informational. The fourth item that we had had some discussion on were the Closed Campus Update. Thank you to Principals Lori Knapp and Tanya Sconners, who came in very last minute to meet with the board to talk about our closed campus and talking about how they've gone this far this year within the closed campus. It was recommended that the board receive their items thus far as informational, so if there's any discussion on that, I'm sure we can come back to that. And so do you want me to move the action items or just keep going through? Okay, great. So the next piece for the action items, Item A, it was recommended some changes to the 2013-2014 school year. I'm going to read through this so that it's a little more official. And the school district is currently, we currently lost seven instructional days during the 2013-2014 school year due to weather that we really hope does not continue this evening. In order to add instructional time back to the school day, we've developed the following plan. And I want to say that that an initial plan came through to our board about a month ago. There was a considerable amount of feedback that we received from the community, and then a considerable amount of work was done by the administration and discussing with administration, working with, within our schools, and I'm, as I move this item, I'm proud that we were able to come together on this, that this was, that we need, we need those minutes back for our students, and we need to make sure that our students are able to have that time, and so I'm glad that we're able to put that back. One thing I've been thinking about is, it may be twelve minutes a day, but imagine twelve more minutes a day where our kids get a chance to read in their classroom. Even if they get that, just twelve minutes, maybe they don't have that time at home, that's twelve more minutes with an adult that cares about them reading. And in high school, with some experience in the classroom, two more minutes is like gold at times for classroom. How many times would a student representative maybe say, so there's that two minutes you can get an extra question answered? It may not be perfect, but I'm proud that we can add it back to our school system. So, May 16th, 2014, currently scheduled as a staff development day, will become a student day. June 6th, 2014, currently scheduled as a teacher workday, will become a student day. And then starting March 24th, 2014, there will be twelve minutes added to each of the remaining forty-two days, so twelve times forty-nine equals five hundred and eighty-eight minutes, which is, will make nine and a half hours, approximately one point six days. This plan will make out twenty-one point eight hours, approximately three point six days of the forty-two hours or the seven days that have been missed. So it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above changes to the 2013-2014 school year. Am I going to continue moving through? Great. Extended field trip requests. We had quite a few different field trip requests. One was that Duluth Schools, the BPA students get to go to the BPA competition in Indianapolis, April 24th to May 9th. Also, the Denfeld Automotive AES Program Skills USA Club students will travel to Bloomington and will be a part of a auto service technology, or the State Skills USA Conference, and they'll be participating in the auto service technology competition. Also, fifth grade students from Homecroft will be traveling to the Minnesota Science Museum and the State Capitol in St. Paul in March 13th, 14th. And then added to our agenda today, in your green folders, members of the board, there were three additional that were added. A student from East High School was selected to travel from, to Mississippi for the Civil Rights History Tour for the University of Minnesota Duluth Office of Cultural Diversity. And then the Duluth Public Schools Culinary Students will be traveling to the Doubletree in Minneapolis to be a part of the Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Championship Conference. And then the Denfeld High School Students will be traveling to Denver, Colorado, to attend the National Johnson O'Malley Association Conference to provide an opportunity for students to increase their leadership skills. So some pretty exciting opportunities to increase development of our students there. So it would be recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the above and extended field trip requests. And then the next piece was Policy 5140, Newly Enrolled Students' Health Standards, which will newly be named the Immunization Requirements. Attached there are revisions to the policy that were, that were put forward. Jason Crane, and I know that our, Jason Crane, our Assistant Director of Special Education, and our nurses worked really hard on this change, and I want to say a specific thank you, a lot of this is around immunization. We want to make sure that our students are immunized and are up to date, and so there are some changes in here, and I want to actually say a thank you to St. Louis County that'll be coming out to our schools in the coming month to make sure that they're providing some free immunizations to our, to our students. So that's, we're really thankful for that partnership with St. Louis County that will come and provide shots to our seventh grade students. And so it would be recommended that the Duluth School Board, or it is recommended that the Duluth School Board receive and accept Policy 5140, Newly Enrolled Students' Health Standards, newly named Immunization Requirements for the second reading, and it would be to approve this, correct? Didn't it read that we approve it? Okay. And then the next piece is Policy 6151, the addition of an athletic program, and attached are revisions to Policy 6151 with an addition of the athletic program for the first reading. So athletic directors were not available to make it tonight for question, but this is the first reading of it. They will, will have a second reading in the coming month if there are additional questions that board members have.
And I'll be available to answer any of those questions.
Great. Thank you. And then, so it would be recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the first reading of Policy 6151, addition of an athletic program. And then we have diploma requests. The following students have completed all high school graduation requirements and should be awarded a diploma. We have Erin Wayne Lido, Candace Michelle Mead, Robin Lee Stills, Tyler Thomas Vega, Riley Merrill Olson, and it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above requested diploma awards. And I move this agenda. I'm going to move this.
Member Harla, move the education report? Is there a second? There's a second by Member Reston. Discussion, I would like to pull Item A4.
1A4.
1A4, thank you. Member Walti?
I've got a couple to pull, but rather than hog them all, I'll just start out with 1A1, 1A2, 1A3.
It's a stormy night. Okay. Members, Members Slega Punk?
It's already been called.
Member Harla?
No.
You're up. Nope, you're out. Any others? Member Johnson?
2A1.
Seeing them will go in order, we'll start out with Member Walti and the Head Start. 1A1.
Very, very quick question. It seems to me that a year or so ago, we altered the busing for Head Start, and because we had a truncated meeting because of the township elections, I withheld asking the question, but I'm just wondering if somebody could give me an explanation of how the busing changes a year or two ago affected our Head Start attendance?
I just want to point out that the Head Start budget is separate from our budget and that the transportation that they received was through their own budget. And so when there was a loss of part of the grant, they chose not to provide the transportation so that they would be able to provide services for more students. The number of students that they, that they work with is all laid out in their grant.
Anything else on that? Member Walti, 1A2. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I just wanted to say that, again, emphasizing that we did get another Head Start class back in Piedmont, and that's good to see after the sequestering, so that's going to happen again. So just want to commend, commend the Head Start people and our administration for making that happen, and interested to see that, get back in that school.
Here, here. Member Walti, 1A2.
Yes, this concerns graduation trends, and I have, I guess, a confession to make that I'd like to make. I have been somewhat critical about the school districts. What I anticipated was a, an increasing dropout rate. And when I looked at this figure, these figures dating back to the year after I stepped down, I realized that I was in error about that. So having shot my mouth off about that, I would like to take back what I've said and offer an apology for my previous ignorance. I cannot promise that it's the last instance of ignorance that you will find from me. I do have one question, however, if you turn to page 42 in the board book, it's all, it's all white and black, but in our original presentation sheet, it was in color. And kindly, Tanya provided the state's explanation for what all this statistical information was, and I took yesterday morning to read through all of that. We now have a four, a five, and a six-year graduation rate. The state has now finally, in recent years, been able to track students over that period of time and make sure they don't lose them between two or three different schools or school districts. I guess my question has to do, to start with the first, just one of the columns, the first one, all students, and you can see a column there that has seventy-eight, fifty-five, seventy-six point ninety-five, seventy-nine, ninety-one. The only question I have, Tanya, is do those three columns represent three different entering ninth grade classes? So that the first column would be kids who entered ninth grade in '09, and the second column, kids who entered ninth grade in '08, and the final column, kids who entered in '07? Are those three, what exactly do those three different columns represent here?
Dr. Lake?
If you can help me out there.
I guess I wish I would have known that we'd be looking at the complex statistical piece of this. As you know, Member Walti, it's a seventeen-page document that comes from MDE. I guess I'd be most comfortable if I double-checked that before answering. I mean, I could give a stab at it based on my, my understanding of it tonight, but I guess I'd like to take a closer look at it before I answer it publicly.
Member Walti?
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I do, I do say that there are three different colors for it in the colored version. Four year is blue, and five year is, is green, and six years is twelve. And I'm really quite heartened that the state is able to track kids starting from ninth grade for, for six years. But since those are kids who, well, I will let you explain that to me at a later date, but I just, that was the one thing that confused me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Walti. Dr. Lake, I want to thank you for putting that together. You cleared up a lot of questions I had personally. I thought you'd, outstanding job. Okay. 1A3, Member Walti? Oops, I'm sorry. Member, Member Johnson?
Do I have to knock on the table?
Yeah.
Throw something at you?
My fault.
Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a question and a couple comments. After looking at this, Dr. Lake, I know there was a difference between District-Wide Continuous Improvement Plan and that, and just, the graduation rates in the latest handout was seventy-eight point five-five, and yet it was sixty-seven point two in this, and could you just explain a little bit that? Is that due to the different counting system we have now?
Sure.
Dr. Lake?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. In January of 2013, 2014, just this coming January, or just this most recent January, is when the recalculations were done. So the numbers that are in the Think Kids District-Wide Continuous Improvement Plan are the result of the old calculations. So we're going to need to realign our past numbers to the new system that MDE is using.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, I know their graduation goal, which is certainly great to be at ninety percent we have, and it was only eighty-one point four-five, so that's where you see that goal being put up on that. So thanks for that explanation. I do have a couple comments on that, and I always say this because it's so important and it always concerns me so much. When we have the graduation rates of, say, for example, blacks are, I'll put this, read this, the black graduation rate was forty-seven point two-seven, which is a drop from fifty-eight last year. That concerns me. I'm hoping that's because of a statistical small sample, but just wanted to point that out. That's a significant drop, over ten percent of the black graduation rate. And probably more important is that the national median for state graduations for blacks, according to the U.S. Department of Education, was sixty-seven percent. Minnesota was the second lowest of all the states at forty-nine percent, and of course, our graduation rate is only forty-seven, so unfortunately, and just bringing this up is that's something we've been working on and working on, it's something we really have to do, but Minnesota has one of the lowest graduation rates for blacks in the country, and we have, we're even lower than the Minnesota average, and it's not a good situation. We have to deal with that. The other category is that the American Indian graduation rate was thirty-two point five percent. It dropped from forty-six point five in last year. And again, the national median for states per the U.S. Department of Education was sixty-eight percent for Native Americans. And Minnesota was the lowest of all the states, believe it or not, at forty-two percent. And our graduation rate of thirty-two puts us even lower than our state, which is the lowest of all the states. Again, we always bring this up, it shows how important we have to deal on the achievement gap, and it's, just bringing it up is that's something we have to deal with, not blaming anybody except myself as a board member that we have to deal with this and hope that we can keep dealing with that as we go. I did want to, again, again, I'll pass on to the superintendent, you've seen this, but this is the graduation rates from the U.S. Department of Education, from two years ago, unfortunately, from the U.S. Department of Education. So thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Member Johnson. We now, we now move on to 1A4, and I would like to make motion to rescind, oh, Curriculum Alignment, I'm sorry, 1A3. Member Walti, I apologize. I put an X and I shouldn't have. I put an X and I shouldn't have.
I don't know if we else caught this. I thought I said this on, on the news, Member Johnson. I thought I heard something on public radio that indicated that Minnesota's graduation rate as a state compared to other states wasn't quite as bad as initially reported for African-Americans. And perhaps somebody can tease out that information and pass it on to us, but, but it was a little piece of good news I only caught a corner of on the news, and I'd be interested in hearing more about it. Obviously, we in Duluth have, have got some, some catching up to do. Thank you, Chair Murneke. On the curriculum alignment plan presentation, I finally got a chance to finish reading that subsequent to the Education Committee meeting. And as I, as I read down to it, I noticed that some additional information, kind of concluding with the mention of one of our schools, adequate time is being allotted to address all standards and benchmarks at all Duluth public schools, including Laura MacArthur Elementary. And, and of course, that has been covered to a small degree in the news recently. And it got me wondering where, where this came from. And I, I sort of deduced that maybe this was a mandate from the state Minnesota Department of, Department of Education, which, which specified Laura MacArthur. And there had been some email exchanges recently concerning this, this area. And I know that we basically have had a very reduced curriculum department in recent years, and so it probably has been difficult to keep up. But I was still interested in the fact that one school was singled out by what I presumed to be the Department of Education. We also received some enclosures, which I downloaded from the, the email system communications, but the communications were only the ones that we had passed on to the state, and someone else sent me the return mail. And I will just make this perhaps oblique comment for those people in the audience that I found it helpful seeing both, the email going both directions, and I would hope the administration would do its best to, to keep us apprised of, of things and give us a full picture so that we don't get caught up short. So that's, that's my comment. I don't really have a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Walti. Superintendent Gronseth?
In response to that, Member Walti, I'll remind you that during my superintendent's report and the February meeting, I told you that I had just returned from a meeting with the commissioner regarding our curriculum. That came from a community complaint and that we were directed to work on our curriculum, that we had agreed on moving that up, and then provided you with the plan and exactly what needs to be done at the Education Committee, and it's in your report tonight. So I just want to remind you that I, I've told you that before.
Member Johnson?
Sure, I've got some comments on this one as well. We had a long discussion about this curriculum alignment on Tuesday, and as usual, I expressed concern about the top-downness from Washington, about, I don't like them telling us what to do. I think teaching or test scores are not necessarily accurate assessment of, of students nor our education system. And I have frequently lauded the district on the progress that we have made in raising our test scores like at Laura Mac. And how Laura Mac, Laura MacArthur went from having horrible test scores to a success story that we were profiled in Washington, D.C. Unfortunately, on Friday, and again on Saturday, as I'm sure we've all seen, the Duluth News Tribune had front-page articles headlined "District Called Out on Curriculum Standards." They questioned what was happening at Laura MacArthur. Later, the story was broadcast across the Midwest via newspapers and TV reports. I continue to think that Laura Mac is making progress and hope that the accusations that are broad-based required curriculums have been shortchanged to teach to the test turn out to be false. But I must state that I'm, I'm getting a little concerned about hearing about the Duluth News, the Duluth School District in the newspapers rather than from the administration. We all know this issue was raised last November via emails. We all seen those emails. I thought this issue hadn't been vetted, and I was waiting for this to be brought up by the administration. I sent a letter to the Minnesota Commissioner of Education on November 25th asking to be informed of any review. She replied that she was fact-finding and was certain the superintendent would provide the board with any update. I've heard nothing. On February 12th, over a month ago, I asked the superintendent again about what happened to the issue. Had there been any meetings, reviews, reports, anything? I was told nothing. I didn't even get a reply to that email. Last Tuesday, with all our discussion, never once was anything brought up about the non-known fact that this curriculum alignment had everything to do with MDE review, which had been spurred by the complaint that we had been teaching for the test and not fully teaching other subjects at Laura MacArthur. After this hit the headlines four days ago, and I found out the full course of events leading up to this, I sent an email to the superintendent again, asking for information and correspondence from MDE. I never received anything. I then called up MDE myself, and within an hour, I had all MD letters that were quoted in the media. Something was sent to me within an hour of this meeting. I haven't got it. Those letters indicated that the district had deadlines to respond to MDE on this matter. I then again emailed the superintendent again for those responses, and I again received nothing. So I call up MDE again, and within an hour, literally within an hour, I had all the data that I asked for, which is all the district responses that hadn't been given to me. I am concerned about the lack of disclosure to the school board, the fact that we, the school board, was the last to find out about this review, and this is a serious issue. There are still questions to be answered. Did we teach to the test? Was Laura Mac's curriculum changed two years ago when we found out that Laura Mac was a focus school? I continue to think that Laura Mac is making progress and hope that the accusation that are broad-based required curriculum has been shortchanged to teach to the test turns out to be false. But clearly, we, the board, have been the last to find out anything. We should have been informed of this all along. Did we, as a district, have to prioritize raising our test scores? Did such prioritization lead to a decrease in teaching of other subjects like social studies and science? Maybe such prioritization should have happened, but we, the school board, should have been involved in any such decision every step of the way. Instead, we were cut out of the discussion. This is a very, very serious issue of there is any truth to the allegations. This is, this is a school in my district, in my community. I and the people I represent want to know what decisions are being made that impact our children. If we have to prioritize our teaching to the test rather than other broad-based teaching, we, as a board, should have been involved in that. We, as a board, should have taken that responsibility on our shoulders and shouldered some of that blame if it's true. And I'm asking that we, as a board, share some of that responsibility, and we have to share that by first being informed on what's happening. And again, I'm asking that we do be informed by the superintendent. And again, I'm asking this also for the commissioner, the commissioner as well, and she did respond to me within hours of my request, which I appreciate. But again, tough decisions must be made. The board should be making them in the full light of the public.
Superintendent Gronseth, would you like to respond?
First off, in November, I did share that there was a concern and that we were sending reports. I spoke with board leadership on December 19th. We sent that information and did not hear from the commissioner until late February. Like I said, the, I met with her the Friday before the board meeting and shared that with you at the board meeting. I did respond to your email. I sent it to the entire board, so perhaps other board members could share that all of the information that you asked for was shared and sent to you. And I also want to remind you that the school improvement plan attached to the school improvement grant for MacArthur was presented to the board, was accepted to the board, by the board, and we've had several meetings where their leadership team has shared their plan and their progress. So I just want to let people know that I have openly shared this information and that the board has been involved with the plan and going forward.
Members Slegapunko?
Thank you, Chair Murneke. Yes, Superintendent, you are correct. You have been sharing. I, I do have to make a couple of comments about this because I am very disappointed in the Department of Education. Because MacArthur was cited as a, is it a focus school or priority? I can't remember. Priority school, which I think it was really, our test scores were really bad. So our school received a grant to improve test scores in reading and math, which they did. They did what they were supposed to do, and now they get cited for not doing enough in other subjects. I, I think there's a little bit of hypocrisy here with the Department of Education with regard to test scores. You know, are you supposed to raise them or are you not? And just, I mean, I know we do give a well-rounded curriculum. I would love to see more of our specialists, music and art in our schools, which everyone knows about, but I do feel that we have focused too much in our state on test scores. Test scores do not always educate the best. However, that is what we're stuck with. And for the Department of Education to cite us for not doing enough in the other subjects, but yet we were cited for not having good test scores, to me, is, is very hypocritical. And I'm disappointed, especially when they can approve a charter school for hockey. I mean, I think there is something that our Department of Education is not doing right and not having enough science or social studies, which you knew you had to focus on the reading and math for a year to get the test scores up. You know, they were in trouble for that. So I see no problem if something wasn't taught as much because you were trying to get kids to read and be able to do math. So I am very disappointed with the Department of Education, and I think we are doing fine, and I applaud Laura MacArthur for doing what they needed to do to get kids successful.
Thank you. Second, Representative Manny?
I agree with the previous representative's thoughts on that, but I want to ask the superintendent just about this presentation you gave, and it's mostly just saying that you're going to be gaining documentation on what you're going to change and then have it ready by August 29th, 2014, and then we'll move from there. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. We will be, and have already actually been working for three years on developing these documents. We're about 40 percent there. We have much of them for the area of mathematics and English language arts. Social studies and science, we have a bit more work to do. Plan to have that in place by late summer and then be implementing that through the course of next year. Part of that may be getting new materials specifically for the area of social studies where some of our materials are far behind. I believe the last president in our elementary and middle school textbooks is Bill Clinton, so I put the date on it.
Member Johnson?
Sure, I just want to re-read again, which I did twice, and my, my talk on this was that I have always supported Laura Mac. I continue to support them as well as what's going on there. But, but I do want to reemphasize again that I got documents from MDE that, no, they were not shared with me. And last Tuesday, no, we did not talk about why this, why our deadline, our timeline had been bumped up was because of Laura Mac. I didn't know that until I read it in the paper. And so again, I'm asking again to share the, the weight of this on the board, and if, and if in fact there's any truth to this, I don't know if there is, but if there is, we should be, as a board, taking some of that responsibility, and I'm willing to do that. I can't do that if I'm not given the information. I was not given the information until I read it in the paper.
Member Walti? Oops, there we go.
Thank you very much, Chair Murneke. I have to say, I, I share an awful lot of the concern that Members Slegapunko has with the, the State Department of Education. I would not be a bit surprised if part of the motivation for this crackdown, if that's what it is on us, is they're covering their own behind. Some of you will have read the email that I shared with the parent who's been following this up, and I made this observation. Sometimes when you've got a sinking ship, you, you start bailing and, and you just act kind of in a, a reflexive panicked mode, which is understandable. And the test results at Laura Mac at 5 percent success was, was one of the things that we, we would have panicked at. And obviously, over the course of the year, as Members Slegapunko points out, we are, the people at Laura Mac turned a serious corner and presumably are still doing it, and that is what we all can, can cheer for. But not to state it, well, to state it pretty bluntly, the, the concern is, and I, the jury is out on me for this, but, but the concern is not unlike some of the scandals that have erupted around the nation where some school districts had so much pressure put on them that from the top down, they put pressure on schools, and, and we had administrators in schools cheating on, on these terrible standardized tests that are being applied to us like, like, like thumb screws. And while obviously that is not what, is not something that took place, sacrificing a full curriculum to, to have to achieve good results in, in the reading and the math is a, a signal sacrifice. And I do not know to what extent that took place. It has been suggested it's, it was near total. I don't know if that's true. I certainly hope it wasn't. I'm an old social studies teacher. I'm a math, I'm a, I'm a science nerd. But I, as a school board member, feel that I need to be brought into the discussions and be given a full picture of what happens, and I certainly can agree with Member, Member Johnson, if, if he feels that some of the information concerning this very serious affair where we have a school that's been troubled has not been provided. Well, I rather feel the same way, and I'm hoping that the administration will feel confident to share all information with the board members, knowing that the board members have the best interest of the community at heart, and we're not interested in witch hunts. We're interested in turning the Duluth School District around.
Member Hala?
I just have a, a general question about curriculum alignment in the state. Are there other school districts that are, that are still working on this as well, too, that are in their, in, in the process of working on aligning their curriculum to state standards? Or is this a?
Superintendent?
Yes, there are, at any given time, school districts are working on their curriculum. It's something that is continually reviewed and redone. At the state level, it's on a 10-year cycle that curriculums are updated, and so districts also go through a cycle of, of continual renewal. And we have fallen a bit behind on that, given our financial struggles. And so it is time that we get caught up, and I'm looking forward to doing that important
Member Johnson?
Just real quick thing, I did, MDE did tell me that they are still looking at the plan that was submitted that we have in our pack-up, and that's still being looked at and won't be here for another week, just so the board does know that.
Thank you. I'd like to comment that I, I feel as a chair right now that I received information, I received emails. We had discussions at Education Committee meetings and questions were asked, and we can ask questions. For the media, I think it's important to understand a teacher's point of view, and I was a teacher for a long time. You get six hours with the kids, and the federal government tells you, make sure you do this, make sure you have FIDE, make sure you have music, make sure you do this. do this, make sure you have FIAED, make sure you have music, make sure you do this and this. And the state comes in, I make sure you do this, and we're going to test you on this and this and this. And you go to a third grade, fourth grade teacher, and in six hours, if you don't bake this cake the right way, you're going to get penalized, and you're going to get, it's going to be publicized. And people are going, oh, what's wrong with that third grade teacher? And it all depends on the ingredients you get. Some people have kitchens with all the ingredients they need, and some people need to make do, and it's tough. And I know that. I've been there. It's very tough. All the board members know that we get letters from people talking about our music program. And I played cello in the seventh grade. We had, and this is at Lincoln, we had seventh, eighth, and ninth grade orchestra, band, choirs. We need music all the way down to the third grade if we could. An old friend, a former board member, Tony Staber, has written us about vocational, and how we need to provide vocational. And he makes a great argument. We should have more vocational for kids. We should be doing other things, too, in arts and in writing. But then you have the state, and Member Johnston, you brought this up at noon last Tuesday. And we're in, and I never thought about this, we're an independent school district, and Member Johnson mentioned, I'm not sure how independent we are. We have federal mandates, and we have state mandates, and you have to jump through these hoops. I don't know if you saw this, for Laura Mac, 44 benchmarks in one of the disciplines. You have to do this, 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 and it's tough. I want to end this dialogue here by going back to congratulating Principal Glocle and the Laura Mac staff, and the Laura Mac parents, and the Laura Mac parents, students. They did turn around. They did a phenomenal job. They're honored in Washington, DC. I see where I see a lot of progress. I see people who are not in the educational game, not really understanding what has happened, and what a wonderful job they've done. Okay, any other comments on that? All right, thank you. We go on to 1A4. I'm sorry, Member Westom.
Yeah, the whole discussion on test scores, it's an interesting one, and I think we need to keep test scores in certain perspective. You know, I found that, of course, we judge schools about their total test scores, but what I found test scores most useful for were individuals. And so I know we spent a lot of time at Denfeld with various tests, analyzing, you know, was there something in our curriculum that we were weak? One year we were particularly poor, and I can't remember what test it was, maybe it was a PSATs, one that sophomore takes, preliminary scholastic aptitude test. And we were kind of low, and it happened to be geometry. So we went to the math curriculum, the math staff, and, you know, what are we missing here? What is the test covering that we're not? And we actually found out that even though our books covered a very good geometry curriculum, there was something that was covered heavily in the tests that we weren't emphasizing. So we went back and emphasized it, and the next year, our scores went up quite a bit in that part of the PSAT test. So we needed to keep that, those test scores in perspective. Yes, they're useful, but to a point. And there's much that we do individually in our buildings, in our, with our teachers, and in our curriculum that supersede really what test scores can cover. You know, I think I mentioned at that meeting last week that Mark Twain said there were three kinds of facts: lies, damn lies, and the statistics. And so we need to keep test scores in perspective. Yeah, they're useful, but we really need to be careful how we analyze them. And I know you do an awfully nice job with that, and so we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Westom. I see no other lights. We move on to 1A4. This is a closed campus update. I would move to rescind our item 2A2, and, and, it's from a previous, we're basically, we're basically, I'm moving to rescind the closed campus. And I, 1A4, no, it's, forget the number. Forget the number, it doesn't matter, it is, it's correct, but I won't explain it now. I'm moving, at this point, to rescind the closed campus.
Second.
I'm sorry, who did, who seconded it? Member Walti seconded it. Now we open to discussion. I guess since I made the resolution, I'll start with it. There are a number of reasons I've been opposed to this from the onset, and I count as Lori Knapp and Tanya Skoniers, the principals at East and Denfels, good friends, and I count as Member Saliga Ponco, longtime good friend, and I think we're just on opposite ends of this. I'm going to make it very short. I mean, it's going to cost money that right now we don't have, but I'm more against it because of the amount of personnel, personnel hours and efficacy. I just don't think it'd be effective, and I could talk for a long time on reasons why. And again, I've been in a school district, and I've been there, and schools are full of doors, and if a student is sitting, we're going back to federal mandates now. In the old days, we had chicken nuggets and french fries and all sorts of things, and those are all gone. We can't have those now. And I'm sitting, and I was a student at Denfeld, so if Principal Skoniers doesn't mind, I'll use Denfels example. I'm 17 years old, I'm a junior, I'm not really involved in anything, I don't have a car, and I want to go down to Arby's and have two sandwiches for $5 and a great big Coke or Pepsi. I'm going to do that, and I think I can pretty much get away with it. And so we're going to be spending a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of personnel, chasing these students around, and therefore I'm against it. The next line is, Member Saliga Ponco.
Thank you, Chairman Ernieke. I know we have disagreed on this issue, and, you know, it's interesting to me that we are one of the few school districts that does not have a closed campus in the state. Almost every other school district in the state has a closed campus. And the reasons they do that is it decreases truancy. These are all the things that our data came back, people that actually investigated this last year when we voted as a board unanimously to move ahead with this, a modified campus. But it decreases truancy, reduces substance abuse during school hours, neighborly atmosphere for our residents, increased use of food service, which nowadays it's a lot healthier, instead of going to Arby's for two, you know, hamburgers or roast beef sandwiches with a Coke. You know, I mean, they can get healthy food. Increase in attendance, which translates to increased student performance and test scores, which we've just had a huge discussion on. Decrease in juvenile crimes and activity when students are in school. Increased safety and security, and decreases potential for accidents outside of school setting. These are all the reasons. And, you know, I honestly feel with the amount of money that has been given to us about how much this would cost, that someone that came up with these figures was trying to have this so we did not do a closed campus, and I'm not sure why. To tell you the truth, you know, as we listened to our administrators last year when we had this discussion, there was all the reasons. They wanted a whole year to implement this and get it going, but I think we're trying to make this into some really complicated thing. It is very easy, or much easier, to supervise students that are in one place. In talking to the superior schools, they have 110 outside doors. Do you think that they supervise 110 doors? And we have nine at East? They don't. Just the alarms would go off, they don't even have alarms there. But we have alarms, they would go off, we have cameras, and if kids are coming back in school, they know that the only way that they can return is through the office. They have to sign in. So I honestly think that the amount of money that we have been given here is not correct. We built these schools for closed campus. Two of the items here, more seating and chillers or warmers for our cafeterias, are long-range plan money. That's what we paid for, was the expectation that we were going to have closed campuses when we went into the new schools. It is safer for our children, it's, you know, we talk about having higher achievement for our students, and yet we can do something to actually make a difference with that, and we look at not doing it. And I think the biggest reason is because we have our, a couple of administrators that are against this, and I just don't understand why. Talking to other schools that have a closed campus, they just, they can't even imagine going back. It is so much better for the students. So I just think we're crazy to actually even look at, when we voted on this last summer, we did vote unanimously, by the way, to move ahead for this coming fall with a modified closed campus, so seniors in good standing would still be able to leave. But the rest of the school, they would eat a healthy lunch or bring their own, and I think the amounts here are not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Members Saliga Ponco. Student Representative Manny.
Okay. This is an issue that's been talked a lot about from the student level and affects each one of us who spend a majority of our lives in the system. And what I have to say to some of the points that have been made, that closing campus would reduce crime, would reduce drug use. What I think and what I've seen through studies to truly make a difference is to get kids to want to be at school. And if you're forcing kids to come to school and not leave, the more and more that they feel, and this is what I've heard throughout the school often, is that it feels like a prison to them. And I firmly don't believe that forcing kids to be educated will make them more successful in life and be a more developed adult as time goes on. So I strongly agree with the chairman in this motion to undo the action, and I hope other board members can agree.
Thank you. Student Representative Trimble.
I have spoken with a lot of students at Denfeld about closed campus, and usually, from who I've asked, the students who enjoy using open campus on a weekly or sometimes daily basis just to walk around during lunch or go to eat somewhere. They're the students who usually are on time to class, get what they need to get done, done. And it's the small percentage of students who aren't doing what they need to do that are going to ruin it for the students who do enjoy it, that do like to use, or enjoy to use open campus, that are getting ruined for them.
Thank you. Harry, you look like you're starting. Oh, Member Johnston.
Just a clarification, I think you started, Mr. Chair, was, that was item A2A from the Education Committee report in the June 18, 2013 agenda. This is official for the record, that's what we're rescinding.
Right. And as a, thank you, Member Johnston. As a point of information, basically, we said, all right, you know, let's proceed on this, and we'll talk about funding, and I believe it's a prerogative of a board to say, well, this is going to cost us much money, and at this time and point, we're not sure we're ready to implement it for this reason, that reason, and so therefore we'll rescind it, and that's the reason I brought it up. Member Westom.
I remember, oh, quite early in my years at Denfeld, we started to talk about closing lunch, and what we decided was that it was really the younger the students, the more discipline problems we were having with it. And I guess that's understandable. The older students get, the higher the maturity level. So it wasn't so much juniors and seniors that were having problems in the community, it was ninth and 10th graders. And so we have now moved to closing it for 9th graders, but maybe more analysis, and maybe Principal Skoniers can talk about this, has there been an analysis done on the ages of the kids getting into trouble during lunch hour? And I'm guessing, again, the younger the student, the more, the higher the percentages that kids are getting in trouble. So would it behoove us to perhaps consider closing it for another grade, not the entire school, like 9th and 10th graders instead of just 9th graders? You know, most 10th graders, at least most of the way through the year, don't have access to automobiles, they don't, you know, they don't have the transportation that older students have. So I don't know if that has been discussed in your, in your meetings with your staff. Principal Skoniers, do you have anything to say about that?
Okay.
Or did I screw up?
No, not really. Come on up to the podium, Principal Skoniers, and...
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah. I was just interested to be at a school board meeting. I haven't eaten my dinner yet, so, you know, I might have low energy. The question as to whether it had been, closed campus had been considered for 9th grade only, it hadn't, it has not been considered for 9th grade only, but it can be considered if that was something that the board asked us to do. Again, we had looked at the 9th, 10th, 11th grade, and we submitted a proposal, and we also submitted a proposal for 9th through 12th grade, also if there wasn't a modified campus. And school board member Westom, you asked about discipline referrals or behavior issues. As a whole, in a high school, and I'm saying this as a whole, we see a higher percentage of discipline referrals for 9th grade, and it goes down proportionally 10th, 11th, 12th grade.
Thank you, Principal Skoniers. Member Harla.
I just have a, I'm a little bit concerned that this passed unanimously in June and then is being brought up again. I'm just wondering about the precedents that former boards set, and then also that members from this board were serving on that board and are calling this to question again. And so that's, in due faith that there were quite, I mean, during my campaign, I heard quite a few presentations from folks, and I was compelled especially by a communication that we received from, is I think it's Sergeant Mike Tuscan.
Officer Tuscan.
Officer Tuscan from Duluth Police Department. And I just am requesting from Principal Skoniers and from Principal Lori Knapp that the police department be involved in this, in these conversations and in the plans moving forward. And I understand that schedules get really busy, but if there's any way that as board members we can serve to help in any transitions if this does go through, that there's, that there are plans in place, including community partners, that's great. And I also want to say that I was very compelled by the Power Hour article that was sent out, that Ms. Knapp, that Ms. Knapp sent out, thank you. I think that if it's an issue of student involvement, and, you know, I graduated from Central, I used Central entrance to get lunch quite often. Oftentimes, I was involved in student clubs, but I had friends that didn't. Did I, what, were we, I just, I think that we need to be thinking about the big picture in mind, and also want to see that moving forward, no matter what the plan is, that there's a comprehensive plan in place, there's a lot of communication in advance, and that we're able to work with students and their families on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnston.
I was just going to mention, too, the Power Hour present sheet that Principal Snapp sent out, and I don't know if that's been talked about. I'm assuming that would only be applicable if it was in a closed campus, and just coincidentally, Oklahoma County, Florida, is where I work frequently, and I was surprised to hear Oklahoma County, it's a nice rural county where I spent a lot of time, actually. But anyway, I don't know if anybody has any reaction at all or any comments on that, because it was sent out, and I don't know if that's part of this, if that's, if we pass this as totally out, or just maybe a couple, a couple of comments on that.
Thank you. Member LaFer Kemp.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, for the audience, just so you know, on page 48 and 49, there is more information on open and closed campuses and the administrative perspective and kind of advantages and disadvantages. So just so you have something to refer to, it's been referred to that. I guess I share some of the concerns that both Member Saliga and Harla brought up in terms of, I know a lot of thought was put into this last spring, a lot of discussion, a lot of information, a lot of presentations, and I appreciated getting the information from those discussions a few weeks ago to start reviewing and to educate myself more. You know, one of the questions I asked at the Education Committee was just, where else are there closed campuses? And then, and again, finding out Fergus Falls, Brainerd, Bemidji, Pelican Rapids, many other schools around the state. I talked to friends of mine that have kids in the Twin Cities schools. So there's, there's lots of examples in Minnesota of closed... So there's lots of examples in Minnesota of closed campuses. So I, I guess I was prepared in the Business Committee Report to raise this up so that we would discuss it more when we're talking finances and to move it, as we originally talked about it in the Business Committee Report.
Thank you, Member LaFer Kemp. Superintendent Granseth.
I just wanted to answer Member Johnston's question about the Power Hour and would it still be possible in a closed campus, and yeah, that would work either way with closed or open campus. Yeah, it could work either way. It, you know, would involve adjusting the school day in contract language, but those would be the biggest obstacles in that, in that. But I've heard a lot of people that are very supportive of that idea and like that idea, it would just take some work to get there.
I'm sorry, Superintendent Scanyers.
Not on your wife. I'll just stick with Principal. I do want to also share that there was a question asked at the Ed Committee meeting regarding, when you guys talk about Power Hour, or how to make sure that it is successful. One of the student representatives, I believe it was Manning, said that kids would want, and I mentioned at the Ed Committee meeting, that we want our students to want to be in school, to want to be there. And the proposal that was asked of us a year and a half ago, we put together, and what it doesn't have is what are those elements of the programs that you see in Bemidji and Brainerd and the cities that encapsulate the enrichment or intervention programs or activities that they have at lunchtime? So what I would like to say is, whatever decision is made here, if it is to modify, have a closed campus modified or unmodified, I would like to request from the board the consideration that there will be more monetary considerations needed if we're going to do right by the students and make sure that they are provided enrichment and interventions and those kind of programs during a close, I mean, within a closed campus.
Thank you, Principal Scanyers. Member Walti.
Yes, I haven't chimed in, but I have a lot of things I'd like to say, and many of them I've said to Deputy Police Chief Tuscan, and some of you have been fortunate or unfortunate enough to read our emails, which have been very polite discussions about the pros and cons of the closed campus. We'll start by thanking Tanya Scanners, the principal at Denfeld. She had a wonderful day for a number of us. Dr. Lake and I were both there, Jody LeBlanc, Karia Leider. And one of the things that Jody and I did with some of Tanya's staff was just walk around with the staff, kind of watching the kids as they depart to school at the lunch hour, watched them go over to Walgreens, where a lot of them go, and the Walgreens staff was very pleased with most of the kids, the kids were quite respectful, and I think that was probably true everywhere else. I have to say, I may be kind of an old fart that remembers the way things were in the halcyon years of my youth. Officer Tuscan, without using that crude description, suggested as much. I would be open to closing a campus, but I think, before we do, we have to make sure that there is some reason to keep the kids there so that it's not a prison-like experience. And I don't think that the resources we've committed so far in this plan quite do that. And until we can make the school the kind of enticing place that won't make our children resentful, I would prefer that we opt to hold on and do this if and when we can do it the right way, which is to make the school just a wonderful place nobody wants to escape from at the closed lunch hour.
Thank you. Student Representative Manning.
From what I've seen about the proposal too, it says that most upperclassmen can leave as long as they don't have any behavior issues. And if you look at the breakdown of like behavior issues by like race and like socioeconomic status, it's mostly less privileged kids than I am that would be kept in school and just would most likely end up not showing up from who I've talked to. So from just what I've seen, I really don't think that closing campus, even though you may have already decided, closing campus would help in the regard that you think, and obviously it would cost a lot, as we've seen from many of the principals, like who run most of these campuses, say it have said previously.
Thank you. Member Slega Ponkel.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. You know, I find it interesting, the term "school" being like jail, because we're just talking about a half hour during the day, a half hour. And most of the time, kids, at least, you know, looking at, when I volunteer at school, my own experience, really lunchtime is a time to kind of hang out with your friends. It really is. Sitting at a table, you know, eating with your friends. And there's not that many kids that do go out, and I just, you know, I would be so disappointed if this does not go through. After we unanimously approved it last year, we have been talking about it for probably three or four years, and the idea, I think we're sending, kind of, like we're dysfunctional as a board. How can we keep changing our minds over and over again when this is something actually really good for our students? It really is. That Power Hour, actually, that is something that Superior is doing this year. They went from the modified closed campus, and they're doing that. You can go see what they're doing. I think it's a great idea, but I think you do have to have a closed campus to do it. Keep the kids there, and you can have student activities going on during lunch, you can have meetings, you can have tutoring, all of those different things. And actually tutoring does go on right now at our high schools during the lunchtime, but it would be nice to have an hour. I am totally fine with doing that, but I think we need to do a closed campus to do that, and the fact that we have been working on this for so long, what kind of message does this send to the community that, oh my gosh, we're not going to do it now? We're going to do it, we're not going to do it. And I think it, it just makes us look really idiotic, to tell you the truth. I really do, as a board. I just, I cannot believe that we would even look at not doing this when we've already voted on it. So I just have to say that. Thank you.
Member Johnston.
I was going to think a lot a little bit, I don't have any real strong opinions on this, but I think that, I must admit that I was a little bit surprised when this came up as well. You know, I didn't really, I was just a little bit surprised by it. Again, we, as a board, we can change our mind, there's nothing wrong with that. And again, I'll also say that last week we talked about it, I was probably the most stringently opposed to the closing, and I must admit that I was a little bit surprised when the board did pass a closed one without any unanimously. And I do want to pass on too, I hang out in the rest of the business club a lot, and I brought up with them once what they thought of it at one point, and businesses, like the business, of course, they're not concerned about that. Some people came up to me afterwards and said, well, you know, they think it should be closed because of the problems that have been brought up by Members Slega Ponkel. Campaigning, most residents around Denfeld were really happy that we had closed it. So I'm just throwing out these things, I really don't like to have to vote on this, I'm not sure what I'm going to vote on, but I'm just throwing out some of those pros and cons, a little bit of thoughts that I had on it.
Thank you. Member, Member LaFer Kemp.
Sure. When I, again, spent some time looking over the information all of you had last June when you made your decision, one of the pieces of information, I guess that struck me, was kind of common themes of closed campuses, and it talked about, it was a lengthy process, one to two years, that to do it included, you needed to include all the stakeholders, which would be our students as well. That schools that did it did see increase in choice and in healthy options. Staff, especially non-teachers, got to know kids, increased consistency in food service, food service funds, less waste, improved school climate, reduction in students who are tardy or absent, modified closed campus, increased leverage without use of out-of-school and Saturday school, community relations improved, decreased drug use, safety increased, and we heard a lot about safety from Mr. Tuscan. So, you know, for me, again, kind of reading and hearing and trying to learn about what makes these successful, and knowing, again, that the previous board spent a lot of time on this, I was surprised that we were going to be relooking this issue again.
Student Representative Manning. Let me do this again. There we go.
I don't think it'd make the board look dysfunctional if you weren't to pass this. I think it shows clearness of mind that when you come up with a proposal after a few years of discussing it, some of the principals come and say, this is not cost-effective, and the benefits do not outweigh the costs. So I personally think that, you know, it's good that you're discussing this again, it's something that is good to come up when you see problems with a certain proposal, so, yeah.
Thank you. Member Johnston.
Yeah, that kind of brought up to mind too, an issue that's been talked about, is that, we did talk about the money issue last year, I mean, that was clearly talked about, and this is, the money issue isn't a new issue here, that, you know, the handout that we have in our packet is identical to what it was last June. And so that was discussed, I'm just bringing that up again. I wish I could find some way not to vote on this here, I can't think of what it is right now, but just wanted to point that out, the money had been clearly vetted last June.
I guess I take issue with my good friend about this being idiotic. I will not take that as a personal insult. There's a reason I'm against it, and I don't think it's idiotic, and again, this is a different board, and there is some financial changes that have come about since June 18 that we have to consider, and part of it is the curriculum changes we have to go through now for Laura Mack. This board can rescind this, redirect, and revisit. We can involve, as Member Harla mentioned, we can involve members of the community, including our police force, and have a committee to do that. Boards, including this board, throughout the years, have decided to make a position and then have said, well, maybe not, let's pull this back. To me, the classic one was 1972, when we went into modular scheduling at Central High School and spent a zillion trillion dollars, and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Crawford remembers those days, and then they said, whoa, wait a minute, and we spent a million zillion dollars going back and changing it all again. So, and that's just one, that's probably the major one, but we've had many times. So, we look at this, and I see it partly as a, as a time to spend some money on this that, boy, right now, because of extenuating circumstances, we don't have. And secondly, I just don't think it's going to work, I don't think at this time we have all our ducks in a row. So I'm asking to rescind it. Member Harla.
I just think it's, looking at the writing on the wall, you can give people a year's, you can give them a long time, and for many years, they push back the rebuilding of buildings, and look at how long, how much money we had to spend to update our facilities. And so when are we going to actually take the time to address how students are in school? So I hope during the budget, we can have a discussion on budgeting this, but we can't keep pushing it off. So can we just call the question, please, to see how we can move forward?
The question has been called by Member Harla. There is no debate. All in favor of calling the question, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the question's been called, we move to vote to rescind, it's been moved and seconded to rescind the closed campus. All in favor would, a point of order here, all in favor would be voting to rescind the closed campus, in other words, to take it off the education agenda, and if you vote no, it will be included. Okay. All in favor to rescind, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
In the opinion of the Chair, the knee is habit. The motion to rescind is fails, we move on to Action Item 2A. Member Johnston.
Excuse me, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, where was I? I'm talking about sitting in Denfeld.
Changes of the school year. I kind of caught you off guard, didn't I?
Yes, but, yeah, I'll see if I can get back.
Calendar.
Oh, the calendar, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make a comment, and again, just for the public here, is that, you know, I certainly take the administration's advice on this, but I have to say that a lot of people commented to me, I think, as everybody, the 12 minutes does seem kind of silly. I know this is kind of silly too, but again, I'm not going to pose this, but I just wanted to, wanted to say publicly that a lot of people have expressed that to me, and I kind of agree with that, I don't know how else to do it, so I don't have any magic wand to make it any better, but I just had to make that comment.
I was going to call a radio station. I was listening to this radio, and the commentators, the commentators are talking about this as if it's, again, idiotic, a stupid thing to do. And, again, you go back to not understanding the parameters we're working under. One of them said, well, just have school on Saturdays. And I want to say, well, there's a teacher's contract. Now you go up to the teachers and say, you work on Saturday, and they say, no, we're not. Now what? You're going to work, or I'll beat you. You just can't do that. We had a lot of emails from church groups who have Bible schools. They, I mean, they looked at the calendar back in August of last year and says, okay, we'll have Bible school here, vacation Bible school there. We have people who have plans for their children to go to music camps and other camps and go visit grandma in Vermont, and all sorts of things. And extending the school year into June, I think was going to cause a lot of problems. And when I looked at 12 minutes, I go back to what Member Harla said, and I was a teacher. Boy, you give me an extra three minutes or four minutes in this class and that class, I'm happy. And we go to the bell, I used to go to a bell. So for those out there, not that anybody's listening to me as I babble on, who say this is crazy, the 12 minutes, I don't think so, and I was a teacher, and I think it makes plenty of sense. Thank you. Member, Student Member Manning.
Um, yeah, I mean, I see they have to add some hours for like contact times, I understand that, it's just some kids have jobs right after school, so when you add the 12 minutes, maybe add it earlier into the morning, like start school like a few minutes early if you can, but otherwise, people are going to have a lot of problems with their job, so just letting you know that.
Thank you for that. Superintendent Granseth.
Specifically to Member Manning, the issue with moving it earlier in the morning rather than in the afternoon is we run into some bus issues, because we use the same buses for elementary and high school. Our elementary kids already start at 7:45, and so making it 12 minutes earlier makes it awfully early for them. So I just wanted to say that, and I wanted to add that 12 minutes is what you make it. It's enough to inspire someone, it's enough to have some silent reading time, it's enough to answer some questions. I've given many, many speeches that were under 12 minutes, and I've listened to many of them on Sunday morning as well. 12 minutes is what you make it.
Member Walti.
I plan on voting for this. I have had a number of emails from people, I know many of our teachers begged us to add extra 12 minutes. I've had some parents say this is going to foul up our children's schedule. I guess where I would split a difference is, it turns out that if we don't extend the 12 additional minutes, we will lose some additional funding, and funding is pretty precious. We have had a long discussion over one item involving $200,000, which is sort of measly, and this may not be real big either, but every cent counts in this district. I do have one question, though, that was prompted by Member Manning's question. Is it possible, Superintendent, that for students who do have after-school jobs... Is it possible, Superintendent, that for students who do have after-school jobs, some accommodations can be made for them with their teachers in their last hour of the class so that they can make up the work on their own and not jeopardize losing some of their pay for after-school?
Superintendent?
Well, every conversation is worth having. And by the hundreds of kids who would probably suddenly have after-school jobs, we, you know, could have that conversation, but I don't think that's likely.
Member Harla?
I was actually just going to make a request to community business leaders that may employ our students, that our number-one job in paying taxes is, in supporting our schools, is keeping our kids in school, and so that's important. Also, a TED Talk that provide a lot of information are about, on average, 12 minutes. So, just a little bit of a thought there that quite a bit can come in 12 minutes, so I support that and appreciate the conversation and support for our students. Thank you.
Member Walti?
I have to agree with Member Harla. I listened to a TED Talk that was three minutes long, and it taught me how to tie my shoes a year ago in such a way that they wouldn't come undone all the time. And I highly recommend it for those of you whose shoes always come untied, so that may be the silver lining.
Okay, we're going to move on on this one. See no further lights. It's been moved by Member Harla and seconded by Member Westholm to accept the Education Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes anonymously. That was a joke. All right. We move on to Member Walti and the Human Resources Committee report.
Oh, I forgot I was up. I was so involved in the last couple of discussions. All right, well, I'll try to make this quick, since nothing else has been very quick. We met for the Human Resources Committee. We have a number of action items, certified appointments, there are two, certified co-curricular, there will be 20, certified leaves, there are a total of two, certified permanent increases, there's one of those, certified retirement, one, certified temporary increase, there is a non-certified appointment, three of those, actually, non-certified demotion, there's a total of one, non-certified leave, there will be 10, non-certified long-term substitute, one of those, non-certified promotion, total of one, non-certified resignation, there'll be two of those, and four, non-certified temporary increases. There was one placeholder involving the superintendent's contract, but I presume that we will hold that for another month. We move on that now. All right. I will move the report at this time.
It's been moved by Member Walti, is her second? Second. Second by Member Westholm. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
So, the placeholder is in place, or where does that come in on the discussion of it is?
Member, I mean, Mr. Sworzy. All right, leave the button. There you go.
Individual contracts, we typically put those out there with a placeholder until the board votes on them, so they come into play then. You can move the HR committee as one whole unit, or you can vote on the first piece and the second piece separately.
Thank you. Member Johnston? Oh, wait, there you go.
Yeah, if I could separate the two.
Thank you. Member Walti?
I do have a question, and it's partly because I've just gotten my new policy book, and I have not consulted with it yet, but I'm fairly new to this process because I've only been on the board since the beginning of the year. Does our policy require us to have an evaluation, an annual evaluation of the superintendent, and has that taken place yet?
I can answer that. We've had an evaluation of the superintendent. Yep, nearly. Member Johnston?
Oh, are we, what are we talking about? I know, are we going to separate the two, or where are we at there, Mr. Chair, on this discussion?
Okay, you've moved to separate the placeholders, so we can discuss this now. Okay?
Oh, okay, that's, I know, Member Walti was talking about that, so I just want to make sure we're all in order here. Yeah, we are supposed to have an annual meeting according to our policy, or annual review, which we haven't had yet, and...
We had one last year.
We had one a year ago. It was past a year. Yeah, we haven't had one this year, and so, no, we are not following our policy. And I think that it's important that we do. I guess I'm going to make a move to table this until next month.
There's been a motion to table the superintendent's, superintendent's contract. Is there a second? Is there a second? Seeing none, we can continue discussion. Member Walti?
I was tempted to second that. I'll just make this comment. In some ways, I feel I have to defer to the majority of the board. For somebody new on the board, the decision will wet us together for the next three years, and I look forward to those three years. I've had a good time so far with the superintendent, talking about a number of issues, and I look forward to that continuing. And I just hope that we have productive conversations through this time and that we can both trust each other as we proceed, and I hope that the superintendent proves to live up to the evaluation that you must have based this on last year, and I trust that that will be the case.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
I'm a little bit uncomfortable talking. First of all, we're in a public forum. We're talking about a personnel action, and I really don't think this is appropriate to have this discussion at this time or to have this vote.
Point of order is we're required to have an open discussion. Member Sworzy, would you comment on that, please?
A member of...
Mr. Sworzy.
Individual contracts are required to be basically presented and discussed in an open forum. We cannot do this like with the closed session. We cannot even have a, other than having a closed session to maybe discuss parameters for the superintendent, any of the proceedings regarding the contract is done in an open session.
Thank you. Member Laffler Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. As a new member, I appreciated when I went to the school board training in January, the amount of training we actually got on the superintendent's contract. And so, we in two hours, last night, I read the book on it to make sure we were following procedures and that I understood what I was going to be voting on today. And I, we should move on. I will be supporting, moving on and supporting the contract.
Thank you. Member Sliga Pungko?
Thank you. I'm going to be brief. I just wanted to say I appreciate what the superintendent has done for us the last few years and that there is a, there's no increase, which I appreciate. And I do want to remind board members that, I think, the weather, I don't think it stops snowing yet. I'm not really sure, but I am a little bit concerned about the weather tonight, so I just want to move on if we could, and let's go ahead and vote.
Member Johnston?
Just a clarification. We had our review and performance. It was a closed session last year.
I'm sorry?
It was a closed session. We had the review and comment. And before I go through and vote on something here, I really think we should have a closed session to have a review of performance, excuse me, not a review and comment, a review of performance, which is supposed to happen according to our contract. There's a lot of things I would like to say that I'm concerned about here, and I really don't feel comfortable saying it in this forum, but it seems like since the board is going to want to go forward with this anyway, I guess I'm going to have to say some stuff. And I'm going to say this, and I'm going to apologize, first of all, for saying some of these things, because I've asked several people who would not do this, but I think it's premature. I feel that I am going to have to say something, so apologize to Superintendent Grandseth for some of these things. I know that I want to comment him as well for some of the progress that's worked. I like the communication that we've had and whatnot. There has been some issues here which I am going to bring up, since this is the last time to bring it up, so I'm going to have to bring these up, sorry. First of all, we've had a decrease in staff, 200 people in the last few years. That's not, to me, is not acceptable. We've had cuts in curriculum. We've heard about that today a lot. I don't think that's susceptible. We've had, we've got large class sizes, which are completely unacceptable. Those things are not good. We can't just keep ignoring that. We've had, made no progress in bringing kids back to the Duluth schools. In the last two years, we've lost another 300 students. Other things, like the Moody's report, our bond status is near junk bond status, a worst rating in the state for schools. We've had, every year except for this year, we've had a $3, $5 million deficit. Up to this year, luckily, we got more money from the state. In the last two years, we've raised local property taxes 26 percent, and those are issues that I think that really should be put on there. We also have a continuous improvement plan, district continuous improvement plan, which the superintendent presented us to be rated on, and I'd like to have, like to have some discussions on that. We alluded to that a little bit earlier in discussions on graduation rates, which isn't real well, so I think that those are all issues that we should be talking about. Again, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to the superintendent. I'm just saying that I think at this point that we should be having thorough discussions, and I don't think this is the time to have those discussions, but apparently this is the only time we're going to have it. And so, I think that's, I feel kind of bad about saying this. I do, will say one more thing, too, is that the superintendent's contract, the price is $168,000. It is the highest of all the non-metro schools, including the neighboring schools, and that is another issue here that we've never brought up, and I think some, all these issues should be brought up before we even have a vote on this.
I want to make one distinction here for people out there, and maybe some of the new members. When you have a performance review, you do that in closed session, and we did that. We've had a performance review, and the superintendent came out with flying colors, a number of comments from board members about what an outstanding job he's done, and I'm not going to take time tonight, and I know Member Sliga Pungko will be glad. I'm not going to take time to counter the arguments and talk about all the wonderful things that have happened. I'll just leave it as is. Contract discussion is separate from a performance review. Performance review is in there, and contract discussion is out here. If there are problems in the district with graduation rates, with this, with that, with that, we have discussions on that. But we can do it with our superintendent, and we can face these problems. We can solve these problems. But we can remove the superintendent's contract from discussion on that and vote on whether to hire the superintendent for another term. Member Harla, you're next.
Yes, well, I could say a lot to support the superintendent and his, and how he's doing with that, but with regard to a contract and the level of payment for it, we are one of the largest employers within the Duluth area, and we are a regional economic hub, which is important to think about. I was doing some research, and we took a look at some other states during the economic downturn, and it's shown that Minnesota has fared better because we have economic hubs. Duluth needs to continue to be a leader. We need to have someone that is in our, at the helm, that can lead, and that also understands our community that has a history, and I will support this contract, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Walti?
Yes, I will support the contract, too, but I, I've been so busy the last three months, learning the ropes and picking up information, and that process will continue. I still have a fairly steep learning curve. I think it is true that I've been lost in some of the smaller issues, and the things that Member Johnston mentioned are really the things that we need to work on. I think of us as a team, and, you know, we all hang together, as Benjamin Franklin said, Revolutionary Times rule, we all hang separately, and with us are children as well. So, I will look forward to some discussions when we've slowed down a little bit from all the many things that we deal with to talk about how we can deal with decreases in staff, cuts in curriculum, large class sizes, progress getting our kids back to our schools and Moody's. Those are the issues that you have to have in good shape to make a school district run, and it's incumbent on all of us to focus on that. And again, I'm just going to cross my fingers and hope that the superintendent can help lead this board to address these things that we've run a little shy on in the past.
Thank you, Member Walti. It's been moved by Member Walti and seconded by Member Westholm to accept the Human Resources Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No, the vote was six to one.
Is that here or the superintendent's?
That's included.
Everything?
Everything's included.
Yeah, he wanted to separate.
Okay, I did make a mistake. I apologize. We accepted the Human Resources Report. We will now go to accept offering the superintendent a contract. I apologize for that. All in favor of offering the superintendent this contract, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seven to none. I'm sorry? I flip-flopped, so we're voting on offering the contract. I'm sorry. Member Johnston? Point of order?
We voted on before. I don't understand what you're doing.
I made a mistake. We, all right, for point of order, we accepted the Human Resources Committee. I mistakenly thought that we could just include that because there was no second-tier motion. But, wait one second. Mr. Sworzy, do we just vote to accept the Education Committee report as a whole, which would include the superintendent's contract? That was my interpretation.
You can do it any way you want. You have the option of accepting the whole report or separating that. The point of order that I would not be familiar with, Member Johnston requested it be separated. Did that require a second in order to do the second vote? I'm not...
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Okay, Member Johnston?
Well, I thought I was voting on something else the first round, so that's why I'm asked for the clarification. I don't know what we voted for, and...
Well, I'm going to make a decision here then, and I'll ask for decisions, or discussion on this. I'm going to ask to revote, and I will start off, we're going to vote on extending the superintendent's contract, vote on that. After that vote, we will vote on accepting the Human Resources Committee report. Any discussion on that? Member Johnston?
Yeah, I just want to say again, again, I apologize for bringing some of these things up. I don't think this was the proper form. I felt forced, I had to bring up some of these things, and I don't feel particularly comfortable about having done that, but that's why I'm voting no, not because of, I don't like Bill or anything, but I'm voting no because I think that we, this was not vetted and done in the proper manner. Just explaining to the group why I'm doing that.
I guess I'd have to disagree with you about this not being vetted. We've, we've, we've worked with Mr. Grandseth for a long time, and we've gone through a review of his work, and yes, our district has some problems, but applying those to the discussion of whether or not we should have this person as our superintendent, I don't see that as part of that, that part right now. I think, I think we can address all of the problems that we have, but we certainly don't have to do it through this contract. Okay, let's vote then on the superintendent's contract. All in favor of extending the superintendent's contract, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. We have six, four, and one abstention. We now move on to the Human Resources Committee as a whole. All in favor, accepting this, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seven to nothing. We are done with Human Resources. We now move to Member Laffler Kemp and the Business Committee report. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're ready.
Okay, thank you. So the Business Committee report. And just again, at our business meeting, we had a lot of good questions and took a lot of time going through these agenda items. So appreciated everyone's questions there. And again, thank you, Mr. Hanson, for the clarifications you provided us that day. The usual financial report, pages three, 28, 30, 32, 33, and 34. There were no bids, RFPs, or court reports, no policies and regulations, no contract change orders and leases. Chair, Murnekey, should I wait to do the resolution at the end?
Um, no, let's, let's, let's go through the resolution. We can vote on that. That was, yeah.
So it's resolution on page 35. Resolution B3143167, adoption of the considerations and investments for the fiscal year 2015 budget. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709 St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the attached considerations and investments for the fiscal year 2015 budget as presented to the School Board be adopted. Again, resolution B3143167, March 18, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Walti, discussion. Member Johnston?
Yeah.
This seems really premature. We're still talking about the budget. This is a one-page item. There's some, I think, deficiencies in this page. It doesn't even say, for example, what the surplus is that we're supposedly voting on, or, or what this is computing to be a surplus, which is somewhere in the $3 million. Not even on the page. Again, we still don't know what the teacher contracts impact are going to be on this. And I think that, that I think we're premature of doing this. Again, we're going to obviously be talking about the budget. The full budget's not going to be approved until June at the earliest. And I don't understand why. Could somebody tell me why we're approving this one little page thing when we have all these questions on the page itself?
Member Walti?
I have, yeah, I, I presume that this is not voting on the budget, but just to accept these few specific items that have been presented to us. And at this point, I have no objection to it. So I'd be happy to incorporate them into our assumptions for this budget. But again, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this is not the approval of the budget. This is just the adoption of these initial proposals or considerations to the, the budget.
Mr. Hanson, you've been asked a couple of questions. I wonder if you can respond, please?
Um, yes, Chair Murnekey. I'd be glad to. Board members, you'll recall from the several budget meetings that we've had, we've talked more than once about the idea that this sheet that you're considering at this, through this resolution is the, essentially the roadmap for us to continue down the budget path and provide the framework for the plans that we're going to put together between now and June, when you consider a more detailed, dollarized version of the budget. The other important thing that starts to happen quickly here is staffing for next year, posting jobs, and making sure that all impacted peoples are notified as their contract requires, in case their job is going to be in place or not be in place, or new job opportunities are in place that they qualify for. So moving ahead at this point, if we don't do that, you cause significant havoc within our budget system. And again, we've talked about this on more than one occasion.
Thank you. Member Harla?
I would just, I, I would move to add the, the dollar amount back for the closed campus.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that?
I would move to move the dollar amount back for the closed campuses from the bottom of the consideration.
I think that has been done.
To the above.
Right. Member Hanson, we've approved then, by, by approving this, we, I'm sorry, I have your, by approving this, we will be moving the closed campus finances up into the expenditures? I mean, that has been decided by the board, so.
Excuse me, Chair Murnekey?
No, it's not. The way it's presented, it's the, that expenditure for $200,000 is, is not included. And so it would certainly, if the board wants to do that, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to do that.
Member Harla, I may give you the benefit of the doubt here, since that was a question. Are you moving then to move the furniture, the furniture and labor closed for closed campus on the bottom up into the top?
I am. And, and with that as well, hoping that if part of that, such as the furniture costs and costs for cafeteria, other additional cafeteria costs can be cost, are covered within the long-range facilities plan, that that can be added there. But hopefully, if there are some of those additional considerations that would make the transition more beneficial for those high school, for those.
I'm going to give you a point of order only on this. And I hope you don't, it's, you're making a motion, and then we'll get a second, then we'll discuss.
Right.
Okay? There's a motion? Is there a second? Seconded by member Laffler Kemp. And now we go to discussion, member Harla.
What I said before.
Well said. The next one is member Laffler Kemp.
Just again, from our earlier discussion, and I had said that I was going to move to amend this one, so we can discuss more what the cost of a closed campus may look like.
Okay. Member Walti?
I was surprised in our earlier discussion that there was another apparent change of heart, because most people voting on the, the earlier issue in the Education Department seemed to be indicating that we might be moving towards a closed campus. The one thing that was not evident was whether we would vote for the money for it. It's the old, it's the old parlor game that Congress always plays. They, they approve programs, but then they don't approve any money to finance them. And this is the rub. If we, if we authorize this $200,000, apparently, we're getting very close to moving on with the closed campus. But all of the arguments that I heard against the closed campuses are such that I think it's an idea we should explore if we have the resources. I am not convinced that what we have in store for our children and the schools will make this a success. We're not, we're not doing it, we're not integrating it slowly. I don't think that we have the kinds of fun activities that will make the school a great place to be instead of a prison. And I think we will rue the day that we spent this $200,000 that we are, have not made sufficient plans for. So I will vote against this change in the budget in a year when we, we don't really have nearly enough money anyway.
Thank you. Member Laffler Kemp?
Yeah, just to clarify again, by supporting this motion, moving it back up allows us to continue to talk about this and talk about finances around it. So it just also allows the conversation to continue.
Member Sliga Pungko?
I'll keep this really brief. I do, like I said before, I do not feel it's going to be this expensive. I know we might need a little bit of furniture, but for the most part, we planned on closed campuses and spent the money for the furniture that was needed in the schools. Maybe there is a new refrigerator or something that needs to be in the kitchens. But honestly, I think that this number is inflated. But I, I think we need to do this. We've been working on this for a couple of years, like I said. And to keep rehashing everything, especially when you know, when it is better for our students' achievement.
Member Walti?
Two points. First, to members Sliga Pungko's comments. I was not a part of the board, was not part of the research. This will not be a change of mind for me. I've had great reservations about closed campuses. So I, I feel no, that I'm not owing anything to a decision that was made last year before I was on the school board. And, and then secondly, to member Laffler Kemp's point about this still being open, I think we can assume that if we put this up here, it's not to continue talking about it, it will be a done deal. And, and this will go through. Whether it's, it's a success or not, we will spend significant sums on a closed campus, and we will just simply see how it turns out. So I don't believe that this will lead to further discussions.
Superintendent Grandseth?
I just wanted to, wanted to.
Oh, because you keep hitting the button, didn't?
That's all. I didn't touch the button. I did want to say that, point out that part of the expenditure would be one-time expenditures, the furniture portion of that. And if you look at it, I believe it was in the range of 125,000 of that was for furnitures and chillers. And some of it would be ongoing expense. So that would be a difference in future budgets.
Member Johnston?
Just a point of information. We're talking about moving the $200,000 item. Is that correct?
That's correct. Moving it up to investments.
Okay.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Other sheet said 200, and was it 39,000 or 232? Is that?
Well, this is 200.
One reason I'm worried about passing something like this, we certainly have a lot of discussion on this. And I don't care if it's 200, 232, but if we're, we're passing this as a resolution, isn't this stuff all chiseled in stone? Otherwise, why, why, why are we doing this now?
And again, you know that I'm opposed to it. I'll be voting for it. But it says, it says 200,000, and that's what it is. When we vote on it, it's going to be 200,000. Superintendent Grandseth?
That's exactly what I was going to say, that the 238 and the 200 are both estimates. The 238 was from the presentation last year, I believe. And we rounded that down to 200.
Okay. Member Johnston?
Well, it kind of worries me because, again, I'm not, the whole closed campus thing is still being discussed. But if we're only going to go 200,000, and that's going to be chiseled in stone, and this actually, and the cost is 230, the number one thing is that if we're going to do this, we had to do it right. So one of my missing here.
Okay. I want to say this again. And, boy, we got to move on this. This is, what we're doing right now is we're voting 200,000. If somebody comes up and says, yeah, but I want another 38,000, or I want another 40,000, we're going to have to vote on it. But right now, it's 200,000. Member Westholm?
And I, and I think the title of the document itself certainly states that things are flexible. It's the proposed budget considerations and investments. So we're not locked into much of anything here.
Oh, we're locked into 200,000.
Well, yes and no.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Hearing that, we're voting on moving the furniture labor for closed campus from informational up into investment. It's 200,000 is the amount we're voting to move. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two, five to two. Okay. Member Laffler Kemp?
The next item?
I'm sorry, my fault. There we go.
Okay. Informational expenditure contracts on page 37, revenue contracts, page 58. Oh, do I need to go back to the resolution?
Resolution.
Resolution.
I'm sorry.
Oh, well, we just did the.
We did this.
Yeah. I had, I had read it already.
We're done.
Oh, okay.
We voted just to move the.
We just voted to move that up. So now we need to vote for the whole.
All right, you're right. When you're right, you're right. We are now voting on the resolution B3143167, moved by Laffler Kemp and seconded by member Walti, Wells Westholm. All in favor, I'm sorry, member Johnston?
Yeah, yeah, I did have some discussion on that as well. Am I actually going to move to table this?
You're moving to table?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second? Is there a second? Having no second, we'll move on. All in favor of the resolution B3143167, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. All right, I'm sorry. You know, I look around and I didn't see a light. So I, I hope you don't think I was doing this. But, okay, member Johnston? And I, I didn't see your, your, your lights, so.
There was actually two lights on. Yeah, I did have some discussion on this before.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did we vote or did we not? Or can I, can I have discussion? Or what's going on?
Well, all right, here's where we're at. We voted to move the 200,000 up into investments. And now we're voting on the resolution as it stands.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay. Okay.
And I apologize.
I'm not sure if we already voted on that or not. But anyway, thank you.
And actually, I do appreciate the knock because I, I did not see the lights. Okay. Right now, Mr. John, member Johnston has the floor, followed by Walt. Point of order, member Walti?
I would just point out, the one thing I know about parliamentary procedure, my dad told me, was if nobody objects to anything, it's okay. So if we don't count the vote we just had, we can hear the discussion and then vote again. If nobody objects to that procedure, we can do that.
Yeah, right. What we're doing right now is we're, we're having a discussion. Member Johnston?
Sure. Yeah, I want to bring up a couple of things here. Why I'm concerned about this is that I think we're premature. And this is why I think we're premature, is again, we're talking about adding 16 teachers. That's the 101,450,000, which of course, I'm in favor of. I think that we could do better. If we move this 200,000, which we've already done up there, that's, that's, what's that, three teachers there? I mean, we're all, this is pros and cons that we have to do here. Other issues that I've got with this are, again, as I've already mentioned, how are the teacher contracts going to impact this? This very well may have to be lower down if the, the teacher contracts, whenever they get resigned, it may be it'll go up. We don't know. Again, and other issues that I've got on this are, excuse me. Again, we talked about, on our last budget meeting, about transferring, one of the sheets that we had was, part of the money that we're getting, this additional money is going to go into the, the reserve fund, trying to build that back up. I understood by something close to $4 million. Maybe I misunderstood this sheet that we're talking about. I'd like to have some discussion. Should some of this money, should we be splitting that up, taking half of that $4 million and hiring more teachers with it, which is what I would like to do? You know, that would be talking about a couple million dollars. We could double the number of teachers we have here that would help lower our class size. I think those are very, very important issues that we got. And other issues that I've, that I've been trying to bring up is that, again, the money that's being transferred out of the general fund of the 2009B, the 2010D, and the 2012B amounts about three and a half million dollars. There, we would be another, what, 40, 45 teachers there. I'd like to have all these items on there and actually discuss. And that's why I'm going to be voting against this, is because, of course, I'll be bringing these items up again in the future as well. We have potential here to hire a lot more teachers than we're talking about here. I'd like to see that happen. We have, I'd like to see the, at least see the discussion. And these are discussions that I think we have to have still. The reason I'm voting against this is I think that this is premature. I will be bringing it up as a budget discussions come up, all the points that I've raised.
Thank you. All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six to one. Thank you. Member Laffler Kemp?
Okay, so informational expenditure contracts on page 37, revenue contracts on page 58, other contracts on page 61, facilities, facilities management and capital project status report on page 70. Again, one part of that was an update on the operations staff. And I just want to, again, thank our operations staff for all the extra work they had with all the snow this year. And then contracts signed in relationship to the long-range facilities plan, none. Change orders, none. And then future items, Carrie Leiter presented us with a lot of information on the Congdon Park roof replacement bids. And appreciated again, Carrie, you helping educate us on the bidding process. That was real helpful. May I have a motion to approve?
You move, no, you.
I, I am making a motion to approve, sorry.
It's been moved by member Laffler Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Harla, discussion. Member Walti?
I'd like to withhold C, 6C. Have a quick question. Page 68.
Okay, members Walti?
I read through the contract. It looks, sounds like more of an agreement to me. A contract usually involves some sort of a payment. And it looks to me like there is no agreement to pay the church for the use of their, their grounds. no agreement to pay the church for the use of their grounds, perhaps some maintenance. Is there, is there a dollar figure attached to this?
Mr. Hanson.
This is the Piedmont property?
Mr. Hanson takes the fifth.
The agreement with the church adjacent to Piedmont School for the use of their field does include us providing some construction work in the form of sidewalks to get the kids to and from the field. Mr. Leiter, there might be something else there that I'm forgetting. There is no annual payment, just to clarify that. There's no, you know, lease amount for the field itself.
Mr. Leiter.
Chair Merneke, board members, we did, and we have continued to hold some budget value from our long-range facilities plan related to improvements associated with this field, and that would include what we're currently estimating for approximately 25,000 is some crosswalks and sidewalk from our school property, leading from our school property over to this field, and that was part of our agreement with the church.
Member Walti.
I'd just like to make the comment that while we will be improving their property minimally, it's very generous of this church to allow our children to play on their property, and they should be acknowledged and thanked for their help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seen no lights. We will now vote, I'm sorry, Member Laffler Kemp, did you have something to say? No? Okay, we're accepting the Business Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to nothing. Okay. There are no special resolutions. Any questions or comments? Superintendent Grundsath.
Yes, I didn't want to let this opportunity go. I am very thankful for being offered an additional three-year contract, and as a third-generation Duluthian, I want to say that I'm proud of our schools, and I'm proud to be a product of our schools, and I'm proud of our teachers and our administrators, and the work that all of our staff does every day. And do we have challenges? Absolutely. We definitely have work to do. It's not going to be easy, but I'm very willing and very proud to stand up next to our administrators and our teachers and our peers and do this work every day. So, thank you for the privilege of working for the Duluth schools.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Harla.
I just wanted a, one quick committee report out from committee. I attended the Education Equity Advisory Committee this month, and there was a member of it that's been there from the beginning, Ms. Belula Sayer, Belula Sayers, I hope I'm saying her name correctly. Bula? Buula. Sorry, she has been on the board, on the IAC since the beginning, and she was honored for her time. She actually has to step off, and I just want the board to know that we have members of our community that are serving on the Education Equity Advisory Committee that are doing a really, that are investing a lot of time, and she has as well, too, and just had a lot of wonderful things to say. So, a very large thank you to her for her service and for, and for service to our district.
Thank you. Student Member Manning.
To relate back to the music groups that came earlier, one of my biggest things and pros, things that I've been in is the jazz band at East High School. And what I've seen through all the things that we've done, like working with all the bands in the middle schools, is that after cutting the hours that middle schools can have, a lot of the kids are unable to do an instrument, and the fine arts are being taken out of their lives through that action. So, if there's some way to begin to reconsider that option with, if we have any funding, I would strongly encourage that, and I plan on working with the curriculum person who brought up some of those views about some of the issues that she brought up.
Thank you, Member Manning. I'm going to take a second here to thank both student Member Tremble and student Member Manning for their input today. We appreciate, again, a student's point of view. Member Johnston.
Well, just, I was looking back, and when we had the vote on the closed campus rescinding, what was the vote on that? I wasn't sure. Is anybody from the secretary...
The vote was five to against rescinding.
Two, five.
Two to five. Mr. Weston, when I voted to rescind, the other five said no, so we moved on.
Oh, okay. You voted to rescind, okay. I...
We voted to not rescind. Five to two. And you were one of them.
No, I didn't vote on that. That's why I wanted the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Count it as voting.
Yeah, right. Again, that's why I'm asked, because I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Member Laffler Kemp.
Yeah, just, real quick, I serve for the School Board on the Head Start Policy Committee, and really, again, appreciated the report Pam did to our Education Committee. Again, a lot of community parents volunteer on that. And also, this afternoon, I spent with the Quality School Committee and with teachers across the district, talking about professional learning communities, and I left there just very proud of the staff that we have and that participated in that discussion. And like Superintendent Grundsath, I'm just so proud to be serving on this board and being out in the community, at the schools during my Love to Read Month, and reading, and going to some of the music in the schools events. We have a lot of great things going on in this school, and I thank Superintendent Grundsath for helping lead us.
Thank you. Member Sliga Pankel.
Thank you, Chair Merneke. I just want to echo student Representative Manning about our music groups. We have an incredible music department in this district, and I am sad about what we have lost in the middle schools, because it is going to be affecting our high schools. We are probably one of the only school districts in the state that does not offer instruments at least fifth grade. And it does get frustrating to me, because I know, and a lot of us do know, the benefit of strong arts in your life. It's not just, you know, because, it's just a wonderful subject, but it literally does affect achievement. It's, you know, it's been proven. So, I have been a strong advocate for music, and I am hoping we can continue, and we do add back some of those lesson pieces that were addressed early this evening, because that is critical to maintain what we have in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnston.
I just want to echo all the concerns also about the music program, particularly in Dunfall, we lost our chamber orchestra. That's a major blow to us, and that's, and again, when I brought up issues, how can we hire more teachers, and, you know, we need to.
Yeah, I feel strongly about the music program. One of the most fun experiences I had was my one year as a senior, when some of my homeroom, the girls in my homeroom told me I could sing, and I joined the choir. My daughter was a cellist at East, and she was in the choral ears, and that has been a great, a great boon to her. I will say this, I don't see how we can save the music program without a serious, serious reevaluation of how we do things, how we finance things. And, and as heartfelt as these comments are, I have to say, talk is cheap. And until we reevaluate a whole lot of things about the way we finance things, teachers' contract negotiations, music is going to keep going and sliding downhill, and I very much regret suggesting that that's the future.
With that, we close with prayer. We are hoping that we will not have a snow day tomorrow, and we're hoping that this, a month from now in April, we also will not have a snow day, God willing. Thank you. Good night.